You figure out the rest.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inglewood City Council. Today is Monday, February the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is now seven oh four P. M. Before we get into it, Pastor Leon Porter, come up, please, and give us prayer.
That's Crawford.
Crawford, always call him Porter, you know that, that's my guy, I've been knowing him all my life, Crawford.
God bless the city of Inglewood, God bless this wonderful bouquet of leadership. Father, we thank you, we give you honor, we give you glory. We thank you for our city and our leaders, and we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, uh, to move our city forward. Let your hand be in everything that we do, and in the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Crawford, and thank you, Councilman Chisholm. All rise for pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Madam Plurk.
Yes. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Present.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Watley.
Present.
And Councilmember Washington.
Present.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
All right, moving right along, thank you, ma'am, approval of the agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
I have a correction.
Approval of the agenda with support from the Mayor Protim. And correction, what's the correct?
Yes, sir, on the, uh, mayor and council comments, it said, Councilmember Watley announced that if anyone is interested in becoming an Inglewood.
That's under the consent agenda.
Huh?
That's gonna be under the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I always do that, don't I?
That's okay, you just moving us right along. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, ayes have in motion carries, all right, moving right into presentations. Friends of the Rouge, Mr. Herman Jenkins and Ms. Octavia Smith.
Awesome, thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Wimberly, uh, the honorable members of this body, uh, thank you for allowing me to present to you today. Um, more announcement than a presentation, um, as some of you may know, Friends of the Rouge is endeavoring to establish a twenty-nine mile water trail and network of connected greenways on the Lower Rouge River. Um, this includes our work, um, with municipalities and, uh, community organizations to, uh, to realize this vision. Um, this, uh, also includes our work with the Inglewood Task Force and the things that we're doing with the city of Inglewood, uh, to bring this about, along with, uh, the work that we're doing with Wayne County Parks. Um, we expect that, uh, hopefully by the end of this season, uh, that two universally accessible kayak launches will be installed in the city of Inglewood. Um, actually, one, excuse me, one will be installed in the city of Inglewood, um, in Inglewood Park. Um, and actually to kind of create some excitement and motivation, uh, in the city of Inglewood about paddling, um, in this new opportunity. Uh, we're looking to have a Woody Debris Work Day, uh, to help clear log jams between Colonial Park and Inglewood Park. Uh, so we can look forward to having an actual paddle trip and demo day, uh, that will be offered for free on August the twelfth, um, later on, uh, in the, the paddling season. Uh, so we're looking at Earth Day, targeting Earth Day, April the twenty-second, uh, to do our first, uh, log jam work day in the city of Inglewood. Um, and again, we're targeting that space between Colonial Park and Inglewood Park, um, uh, for that Earth Day, and we're hoping that you guys, uh, can help us mobilize volunteers in the city of Inglewood, um, to, uh, to manifest this vision of having a clear stretch of river to paddle, um, in the city of Inglewood. You won't have to go out to Hawaii, you don't have to go to Ann Arbor, you'll be able to do this right in your backyard here on the Lower Rouge River.
That's awesome.
So I think I've distributed to you, um, through, uh, Octavia Smith, um, a copy of our Paddler's Companion. Um, you can see some of the proposed, uh, trailheads there, um, and the full vision, you know, of that water trail. Some unique experiences that you'll have, uh, on the Lower Rouge River Water Trail, um, under the dense canopy and sections like you have in Inglewood. Um, there's some amazing wildlife that you'll see, uh, great blue heron, uh, beaver have actually returned to this corridor, uh, which you might think is unthinkable for the Rouge, um, but it is happening, uh, rare fish like the, the red side dace. Um, this is a greatly restored Rouge River, and we want people in the city of Inglewood to be able to take advantage of, uh, all that it has to offer. Um, are there any questions that I can answer for you guys before we, uh?
Any questions? I could just say one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I know they putting that, that water trail in there.
Yes.
Okay, did they ever, uh, uh, bring out specific how deep that's gonna be?
Um, so the, the river is there, the river is gonna be as deep as, you know, nature allows it to be, you know, in certain sections. The funny thing about the Rouge is, in most parts, you know, what we tell people on our paddle trips is if you fall in, stand up. You know, uh, that's kind of the, the running joke, you know, in most sections of the Rouge. Um, but there are some bends and crevices in the ri- in the river where it can be pretty dark, so, I mean, pretty deep, excuse me. Um, so on all of our paddle trips, we require everyone to, you know, to have a, a personal flotation device, and we would suggest that with anyone who's out there paddling. Um, and then you never paddle by yourself, so.
And I have been paddling for the last couple of years, so just to get Inglewood into, and I have been inviting Inglewood residents, and we have had some Inglewood residents out paddling.
Yes.
It's a wonderful experience.
We, we often, um, you know, check out the, uh, Inglewood Farmers Market, we bring what we call our dry dock pop-up out, bring a canoe, a terrain model of the Rouge watershed, um, and just meet people where they are, talk about this vision, you know, people being able to access, uh, you know, um, nature in areas, you know, that typically have been walled off, you know, from access to nature, um, by industry. Um, so it's, it's a very cool experience, you know, to see people who have come to our dry dock pop-ups or met us at our dry dock pop-up, and then we see them at a paddle trip, and it's very, very rewarding, so. Thank you to Octavia and the Inglewood Task Force and the support, uh, of the city of Inglewood, um, in this endeavor.
It's great, anything else, anybody?
Yes, um, what was your name?
My name is Herman, Herman Jenkins.
Herman Jenkins.
Yes.
And is there a phone number on this thing where we can reach you?
Um, I-
What I was thinking is that there are a lot of organizations that have varied membership within the city of Inglewood. So if you are like sort of partnering with us or endorsing our organizations, we can have that membership to provide you with that volunteer, or at least put it out there for you.
Certainly.
So are you our contact for this type of thing?
Yes, yes, I am.
So Herman Jenkins and a phone number?
Yep, I will give you, I'll give you my personal phone number, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lay it out to you.
Oh.
So three one three-
I just need some way to read you-
This is what I use for business, so it's fine, it's three one three-
Or an email address?
I'm gonna le- give you that as well.
Okay.
Uh, three one three eight zero six.
Three one three eight zero six.
Eight one nine nine.
Eight one nine nine.
You can call me on any inquiries about the water trail or any volunteer opportunities with the water trail, and then my email address is hjenkins@therouge.org.
The Rouge.
You got it.
And we will be putting out the information enough time so you guys can let us know if you need waiters so we can get them for you, your size, if you wanna come out and help, um, clear up the log jams, cause we have to get that done before we can paddle through. We have a lot of log jams in Inglewood, but we've been working on them from Henry Ford all the way down, and they are clearing. So we have actually been able to ride through some of the other log jams.
And kudos to Wayne County Parks for the work that they're doing through the Lower Habitat Restoration Project. They've been able to clear and remediate many of the largest log jams, um, on, on the Lower Rouge River. And now they've directed their attention, uh, to work, um, in the Inglewood Golf Course, um, uh, section of the river. Um, so work continues, you know, through Friends of the Rouge and also through Wayne County Parks, uh, to help eliminate those log jams, and again, make this, you know, river accessible to people for recreation enjoyment.
So if we were to, you know, like, do these partnerships we're talking about, because the beautification committee, I know Abe would be interested in doing that type of thing, or at least adding it to the agenda that they already have.
Yes.
Um, are you the person who would authorize, like, us putting your information on our handouts to people?
Yes.
You are that person?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, all right.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
Uh, I just need to know, what the date, what was the date for the river trip in Inglewood?
Yes, uh, August the twelfth. August the twelfth, typically our paddle trips are from, uh, nine thirty to twelve thirty. Um, and our goal again is to be able to offer this opportunity for paddling in Inglewood, uh, for free.
Okay, thank you.
And April twenty-second, Earth Day, is that first opportunity to help work clearing, uh, log jams, so.
So save the date on your calendars.
All right, okay, thank you very much. Uh, do we have one other question?
Yes, sir.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, just out of curiosity, because how mechanics work and the system overall, once the log jams are cleared and you're going through in the future, how does that work for future log jams, cause I know it's in the middle of nature, it's nothing we could prevent. Is that something you all survey yearly, monthly, weekly?
That's an, that's an excellent question, uh, a councilman. Um, you know, that really sort of, um, leads us to the idea of sustainability, you know, how do we maintain, you know, the progress and the work that we're doing out on the Rouge? And, you know, it really is through, you know, groups like this, and having meetings like this, you know, helping people understand what's at stake and how we actually open the river, and then how we sustain that. Um, so yes, you're right, wood always will fall in the river, it's the nature of the Rouge, you know, when we get heavy rains, it's a very flashy river, as we call it, we get heavy rains, um, it actually will lift logs and, and move log jams, uh, rearrange them, so to speak. Um, so what we primarily focus on is what we call cleaning and opening so that the log jam is passable by a canoe or a kayak. Um, wood in the river isn't necessarily a bad thing, you know, it creates habitat for fish and other wildlife, so we don't wanna pull all the wood out. We really just wanna create a path so that canoes and kayaks can traverse through. And it is an ongoing process as log jams rearrange themselves with heavy rainfall. Thank you.
Anything else? Keep up the great work.
All right, you got it.
We'll get out there with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Frank Irvin?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm really happy to be here and happy to be able to appear before this, this council and tell you about the work that we started to do with Mayor Wimberly. And just, uh, I thought about, about this long presentation, and then I went like, eh, that's not the right thing to do, because that really doesn't tell you who we are and what we do. So what we do is really what is the precipice of what makes us profitable and an asset to the city of Inglewood and the other clients that we deal with. And we are a full-service lobby firm. It's not a bad word, lobby, all lobbyists are not bad, some of us are good. I have done this for about forty-five years. I've worked for some of the major corporations in the world, I've worked all over the world, and I've worked with, um, governments that are both foreign and the United States and in the States. So what, what differentiates us from anybody else that most people deal with is most lobbyists are either state lobbyists or federal lobbyists. Very few are combination lobbyists. We take the two and we bring it together, and we bring it together because there's a big reason for it, and there's a big reason that we try to come and get in front of everything that we try to get in front of. There's an old saying that I believe in, and I think I told it to you. In government, most people don't understand the government, not supposed to understand the government because it's too big to understand. But one thing we do understand, and one thing that is wrong in this country, and wrong when it comes to urban cities, is that if you don't have a seat at the table, you're on the menu. And most urban cities are on the menu, and that's what we're trying to change. So we believe in what we do, we believe in coming together with the mayor and staff and putting together a strategic, um, outline, a strategic legislative agenda and regulatory agenda, and work upfront and find out what we need to do. It's amazing to me that just last year, or just this year, in this year's budget, the Economic Development Corporation or Association, which is a branch of the federal government, received seventeen point six billion dollars in funding out of the budget of the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget. And if you go back to the twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two budget, only two point four percent of that reached small urban cities. That's a criminal thing, and that's one we need to stop, so thank you.
All right, you guys have any questions for Mr. Irvin?
I'm sorry, I always have questions.
Please.
I wanted to inquire about specifics, because he said lobbyist isn't a bad word and all this stuff like that, and I don't believe it is if you're not, you know, making money for yourself, but that's the whole idea. But anyway, I am attempting to find out information, would you be able to assist us with this new, uh, opioid money that just came out, would that be something?
Of what, I'm sorry?
The opioid, uh, award that the state just got. And with us being a minority community that's inundated with that type of thing, I didn't see where we, or how the money was sparse in any way, would this be something you could work on to see that we, um, we were included in that type of thing?
So one of the things that we talked about, and one of the things that I think is wrong, and I think that we need to get our arms in front of them, is that just that, is that urban minority communities do not share in the wealth, especially of state dollars and federal dollars. The reason they don't is because they don't know where to go to get them, and then by the time you go to get them, they're all petered out or appropriated, and then you're left with what's left. Um, a prime example is that there are some entities that are larger entities, government entities, and they'll take certain grant programs, bunch them all together and say, well, you can't apply for this grant on your own, you have to do it through us. And then when you do it through them, the portion of that that you get is only that percentage of what they want you to have relative to the percentage of population and demographics that they have in the entire area. We do different than that, we go up front, and we say, either it's a good deal for you to do it with somebody else, or it's a bad deal. If it's a bad deal, you just apply for it by yourself, and we, we facilitate that.
Mr. Irvin, if I can stop you right there, Councilwoman Watley, just to answer your question, Mr. Green, go ahead, please.
What's, what's our, what are we getting, because normally when they send out these notices through the, uh, the governor's office, they tell you the city, and then they tell you what you're getting, and I have not seen that as of yet.
About seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars? Seven thou- oh, so we gonna buy some crack, we ain't gonna eliminate it.
And Mr. Green, come back with that number, because I think it's a little bit higher than that, I think it's sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand still?
Yeah.
Is, is insulting.
Yeah, so the Attorney General came out last year to the city of Inglewood and actually talked about all of that. We did a presentation right here in council chambers, I invited you all to come out when the A.G. came out, and she spoke about that as it relates to the lawsuit that she went after, um, from the opiate companies and gathering so much money, and they broke down all of the-
Okay, but they okay with naming us dope addicts, but not paying for-
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's still-
Or saying that Inglewood has this reputation, but not utilizing their resources to ameliorate that thing, is that what I'm hearing?
It was a, it was a class action lawsuit that the Attorney General Dana Nessel had, had charged-
I understand what it is, believe me, I'm just trying to find out.
They broke down the monies through all of the, the cities in the state, they gave them a portion. So it was like twenty million dollars, it was only like whatever that portion was.
They got one point two five billion dollars for the state of Michigan?
They probably did for the state, but not for the city.
So we're not, we're, there's, okay, back to you, do you make sure that when these types of things happen, that you are aiming your, your, um, impetus towards the cities that actually need it? Cause I don't see Berkeley needing a whole lot of this money.
So I think, eh, yeah, a lot of it, but you gotta understand, a lot of it depends on the relationships that are there beforehand.
So it's not what you know or what you need, it's who you know.
That's for sure.
Okay.
The state government, that's for a hundred percent sure.
All right.
And, you know, the rela- and that's what we're doing, is creating the relationships, or let's say, bringing those relationships that we already have here to the city of Inglewood and urban cities in this state, where there are abundant cities that have those relationships right now, especially in the state legislature, in the House, and just so happens right now, we, we just flipped the House in the Senate in the state of Michigan for the first time in forty-eight years, and we have an African-American Speaker of the House, um, for, for the first time in history, and I ran this campaign.
Oh, you have that connection, huh?
I do.
Y'all get your pocketbooks ready. Anyway, uh, there's one other question, how often will we hear from you on your progress? Because I understand this is just a six month-
When we, when we set out, when we set out the strategic plan, which we intend to set out, there will be a reporting and accountability mechanism that will be triggered on a certain timeframe, and whatever that timeframe is decided, we'll report out on that timeframe. And there will be milestones and metrics attached so that we can measure, uh, upfront what we're doing and not wait till the end and say, oops, we thought we were gonna do this. We're gonna measure it, and then if we measure it at a certain period, and it's not working the way we want, we'll change it.
Okay, now this six-month period you're talking about, is, is, that's like a relatively short time? If we are receiving the benefit of your experience and your connections, are you planning on extending that to any degree?
I'm sorry, I don't understand, what was?
So you told us right from the front that you only do six-month periods as it relates to your contract, but the Councilwoman is asking if we have success, will you be willing to extend with us?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And why is it that you-
The contract itself is for six months, only to give both parties the opportunity to get to know each other.
Okay.
Right, and if you, and the contract also states that it's, it's, uh, can be extended by either party at any time, acceptable by both parties, but also it gives both parties the ability to cancel within a thirty-day period if the party so, so desired. So it's a wide-open deal, it's only done for six months, and make it nice for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Please, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, have Urban, Urban Policy Group, L.C., have you guys worked with other municipalities just as ours?
No. So the reason, so Urban Policy Group came about because I call myself retiring for the third time. Every time I do it, it doesn't work, so I go back to work. And when I retired from Piston Group, which is the automotive supplier that is owned by Vinnie Johnson, Vinnie and I are good friends, and he asked me, he wasn't happy that I retired, so he asked me to stay on and be a consultant for him, and I agreed. And when I decided to make this company go forward, um, I had potential of, at that point, twenty-seven clients. I decided to take on four, I do not want any more than four, cause I don't wanna do that much work, I like to play golf, I don't like to go to Florida, okay? Um, so I have, this city of Inglewood would be my fourth client, and that's it. The other thing is, I don't mix and match clients, um, I try to stay in one market space for each client so that there's no overlap and no, there's no conflict of interest.
Okay, and so within a six-month frame, cause I know, uh, my colleague was saying it's a short period of time, so that's actually, how much, um, I'm guessing are you, um, predicting, I guess, to go after in regards to bringing the city of Inglewood within the six months?
How much what?
How much are you predicting, I guess, to bring the city of Inglewood or, in federal dollars, within a six-month frame?
So I can't-
Do you have like, uh, which clients, like-
I can't make a commitment, you know, I mean, a promise, because nobody can make a promise on that, but we will took, uh, take a look at the budget and the budgetary process, and we'll also look at the bu- the defined budgets in each area and branch of government that affects the city of Inglewood, and we'll set a goal on that budget, okay? I mean, we got pretty good potential when you got a one point eight trillion federal, federal dollar, federal budget, and the other thing that we have that we will, we, we are seriously gonna take a look at is, as you know, the state of Michigan passed a seventy-six billion dollar budget last year, but ever since then, they've had six billion dollars sitting there, they don't know what to do with, and they still have three and a half billion that they don't know what to do with. They have not appropriated that money yet. We, we will be trying to access part of that.
What's the minimum that you go after, I guess?
I'm sorry?
The minimum that you go after, the amount, what's the minimum?
There's no minimum, and there's no maximum, okay? Uh, but we would-
Already told you, you said two million.
Well, we, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't waste a lot of time for anything less than one to six million at a time.
How much, I'm sorry?
One to six million minimum at a time, that, we wouldn't wanna waste that, because there's a lot of paperwork that goes with it and a lot of compliance that comes in with.
And is that within the six months, or is that, is that within the six months?
No, you can't access that within six months, you can set it up, and there, so we'll look at the low, low hanging, what we call low hanging fruit, and we'll look at the short-term entry points and the long-term entry points. So all, all the time there is short-term entry points, but you have to go within the budget process, okay? For instance, the federal budget was just, an omnibus was passed, and the federal budget isn't forced until, uh, September of two thousand and twenty-three, but the process of working on the F.Y. two thousand and twenty-four budget starts next week, and it goes through April, through the, through the president's process, through the, the Congress's process, through the committee process, and then hopefully back to the floor for a budget. Inside of that is what's called earmarks, and earmarks were brought back into the federal budget, uh, two years ago. Uh, they were done away with before that, but they were, they're brought back into the federal budget two years ago. Earmarks for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two total eighteen point nine billion dollars, and that's really just what we call pet projects of legislators bringing back to the communities, okay? And this time when they brought earmarks back, they eliminated for-profit companies, so you can only be, uh, uh, an entity like the city, um, you can be a nonprofit entity and things of that nature. So we have to get ready for that, and we have to get ready to make sure that Congresswoman Tilly understands that her job is to take care of the city of Inglewood, that Senator Peters understands that his job is to take care of the city of Inglewood. We will make sure that they do that.
And then, uh, just my last question, um, if you can kind of dive into the project in Wayne Westland, the VOTEC?
I'm sorry?
If you were able to get, um, the Wayne Westland School, where you were able to get monies for the VOTEC?
Yeah, for Wayne Westland School?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, got, uh, Wayne Westland Schools out of Society of Manufacturing Engineers, of which I'm president of the Board of Directors, so I, I do work for them also, uh, three and a half million.
All right, that's all I have for tonight, who have questions, please?
Anything else, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna say, uh, regardless of whomever would be, you know, our lobbyists, if, excuse me, in the future, Councilwoman Watley brought up the opiate settlement, um, if something could be put on the forefront to the federal government, is that, like, I was looking at the numbers online, it was like eight hundred million dollars that was settled for the city, for the state of Michigan, but I know it's all divvy up different ways, but a lot of times what the national levels do is look at our statistics from a national level, and they don't actually come down to our city and pull those real statistics, and so I just wanted to make sure that those are just on the forefront, because we know how we're hurting here, our public safety departments do, but on paper, is a lot of times what they look at, and population. And we always end up getting the short end of the stick in Inglewood, because our next-door neighbors all around us will have the same population and get twice, if not three times more, you know, money than we will, and they'll be in way better shape, and then Inglewood just kind of gets skipped over. And I'm not saying it's your fault or any of your professional colleagues' fault or anything like that, but it's just would like for those types of things to be on the forefront when it comes to Inglewood being, um, or, or applying for those grants and lobbied for, that's all.
Quite frankly, that's why you got me.
Okay, well, good money in the mouth, it is.
Because what we have talked about already, and what the problem is, and you just articulated it very well, is being reactionary instead of pro-actionary. And if you don't understand the budget, and if you don't understand how it works and where it goes, you end up at the end, and you say, oh, there's this that was done, appropriated here, can, can I get into that? You gotta be on the front side of the appropriation, and you gotta be on the front side of Congress to go and request an appropriation. And that takes, not everybody knows how to do that, you gotta just be willing to say to a legislator, you're gonna appropriate dollars in this budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, city of Inglewood needs ten million. Now, you may get four, but you asked for ten, that's the way this works. And if you're, and, but you're right, though, if you're not pro-actionary, and you don't know how it works, and you know what's coming down the pike up front, you, you, by the time it gets done, you're too late. And we, we intend to be on the front end.
And like you were saying, one of the phrases that I saw one time that I like to repeat all the time is basically, you shoot for the moon, cause even if you miss, you still amass the stars.
Right. Right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
One more thing, just asking.
Please go ahead.
When he was talking about, um, uh, you have to be on the front end, is there anything we as council people who are familiar with different things that this community needs? Who can, uh, uh, do we ever go with you and speak passionately about this to people? Or is that not the kind of thing that happens? I wanna know what we can do to make people understand what our needs are.
Well, first of all, um, I would not take an assignment on unless I'm.
You would not what?
I would not take a client on an assignment on unless I'm dedicated to what I'm doing. And I know this community. I don't live here, um, but I used to, I used to work here. Uh, I was many years ago, when I came back from Vietnam, I was under Wayne County Sheriff's Department. And I worked at the sheriff's office on Henry Rough Road, so I know the community. But I've lived here all my life, most of my life, and I know what's needed. But I'm an advocate for the community and for, especially for the African American community. So, is that, and, and if, if doing what I need to do and get accomplished requires I go out, talk to people and see people, I love that. I do that, yes.
But there's never a time where we would be on the, not necessarily on the front forefront, but be advocating with you, like if you needed someone?
Sometimes it is, yeah. Sometimes it is. Sometimes we create, um, we take what we call fly-ins or visits, and we take residents to the Capitol Building to, to lobby for what we want for the community. Um, and that's, i- if that hasn't been done, that should be done, yes.
And that's what we're talking about, you know, actually having a plan and then working the plan. You know, for far too long, the city of Inglewood, we've just been chugging along, chugging along, and, you know, no slight to anybody, but our resources are so limited. So when we have an opportunity to start to plan, that's what we should be doing. So all of that advocacy, planning the advocacy, planning how we're gonna spend our dollars and what we're gonna spend our dollars for in order for us to get the biggest bang for our buck and having the right people advocating for us is what we need to do, what we have to do. Especially right now. It's a lot of money out there and, uh, people's, you know, all over the country is getting different things done. But we have the, the buzzword is shovel ready and having your plan ready. And what is the city of Inglewood done so far as it relates to having skin in the game? So this is what we're proposing to do by bringing on Mr. Irving with us, so we can set our legislative agenda and get to work. Go ahead, councilman.
Mr. Chair, that, you, you may mention about some things, uh, that was very important. Uh, Mr. Irving talked about, you know, there's, there's gonna be a process of six months. And in that six months, you know, there, you know, he has to get a lot of things together, relationships and what have you. Uh, so in the six months, how do we, how do we pay for this?
Are you what?
Yeah, so that, that's a question to me. So I, as I said earlier on, uh, councilman, that we have on our agenda tonight as it relates to consumers and looking at consumers continuing to use the property of Inglewood High School. Last year, when I brought that proposal to the city and, uh, we had a hundred thousand dollars and I brought it to this body to spend a hundred thousand dollars on speed bumps, you guys said, no, you didn't wanna do that, and we need to figure out something else to do. Well, it went into the general fund budget and you just kinda was awash. So this year, I wanna be intentional with those dollars. So the eighteen thousand, that's our portion, Mr. Irving, is, is our portion from the city of Inglewood. Then we'll come from out of that money if the council see fits to, uh, continue on with that, with that, uh, agreement with consumers.
And then also, as, as my colleagues have made mention, six months is a short period of time. So what do we do in the long term, in the long stretch, if we need further service? Because, you know, it seems like six months is not going to do it. Uh, there's not really a definite dollar that was going to be given to the city or going after for the city within the six month period to slam dunk any bacon being brought home. How do we look at the long term in paying for this, this service here?
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, so again, once we get to that six month period, if we haven't identified any dollars and we know for s- for sure. And when I say that again, that, that Frank Irving is the, the Michael Jordan of lobbyists. And, and, and he's modest, um, he can tell you all the folks that he's worked from, from president of the United States on down to the Speaker of the House. Um, however, having those relationships, I know, are, are important to bring dollars home. So that's why we'll, you know, with Mr. Irving and the matrix that he's proposing, we're able to actually look at it, report back to this body and say, okay, we're here, this is what we're going after, this is where we need your help at. And this is, you know, this is our progress. And in six months, if it's not working out, it doesn't, it's not meshing right, then we, we move on. And let me just say this, I was one of the people that sat on the council in two thousand eight and, and, and said, let's bring in G C S I. And we brought in G C S I and, you know, you know, frankly, you know, they, they, they've been stepping up a little bit now this year. And last year, they stepped up a little bit more, but, you know, we haven't brought home as much as we should have brought home. And, you know, just making sure that we're working in conjunction with them. And, and working in conjunction with, uh, Mr. Irving, working with them to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to do on behalf of the citizens of Inglewood, to bring home the much, as much as we can.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get that. I mean, I get that, Mr. Chair. We, we, we need that. But we still, we still need a, a long-term strategy far as of how we're going to pay for it. If it's using the consumer energy sixty thousand fully, but we still need some way of a long-term gain if we expect to, uh, you know, go, go after the billions of dollars uh, Mr. Irving had talked about.
So I wanted a year, let me just say this, I wanted a year from Mr. Irving, and Mr. Irving told me he only do six months. And, you know, forty-five years of experience is a little bit more than, you know, I'm just forty-seven. So he has a lifetime of experience. So for him saying that to me and knowing what his relationships are, and again, he's being modest on who he, you know, who he has contact with, you know, I know that we're gonna bring home some money. And, and know that we have a lobbyist that, you know, works with us on the state level, where we're gonna be going after state monies. But we don't have anybody on that federal to get us to that federal threshold. So that's what I'm looking to do. So in six months, we'll revisit it or revisit it before and say, hey, Mr. Irving, are you okay with continuing on with us? And, and then we'll be trying to figure out, how do we pay him? Because right now, again, I'm not trying to take any money from the general fund budget, understanding, you know, where we're at as a whole, as it relates to monies.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, if we, if we're gonna use the, you know, total sixty thousand, I mean, because he, he gonna, he, he's gonna need a year anyway. I mean, once he comes back in six months, so.
Well, it'll be there. It's not going anywhere, unless you say it's there, it's gonna go somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
We're just saying, we're just committing eighteen right now.
Yeah, but it's, it's gonna take, you know.
That's again, that's Mr. Irving, that's not. They're trying to lock you in forever contract.
In response to your question, the six month term, as I said, is.
Speak up, Mr. Irving, a little bit for me, please. Into the mic, thank you.
This, the six months quest, question and the six month contract is basically to set out as, or get to know each other, period. I- i- if, if the city wants to extend the contract after thirty days for a long-term solution, I'm good with that. I'm good if, if both parties are acceptable. But I'm also required, uh, or I'm required to give you, because the way I work, a long stone, long-term strategic plan. Once you look at that long-term strategic plan, if you decide that strategic plan is what you want and what you seek and gives you the things you want, then we sit down and we talk and, and we extend it and give you a long-term deal.
And that's fine, Mr. Irving. You know, and, and it's not to you, it's to how, you know, we, we are, you know, definitely always watching our bottom line.
Right.
So we just want to, and I just want to make sure that we have monies in the future if necessary to continue on with you. And that's all I have.
Yeah, and, and I gotta be honest with you, part of that is if I don't create the bottom line, there ain't gonna be any bottom line, right? And that's really what it comes down to, is that part of this is to create that bottom line and to embellish the bottom line of this, this city, to get projects done and to make things happen. That's what we're all about.
Councilwoman Wash?
So I have a question in regards to what you said with G C S I. So would it need to be a requirement for us to kinda have both? Or, because I know he's doing federal, G C S I do what, the state?
Right.
But you do state and federal, right?
I do.
So, how does that work?
So, again, Mr. Irving, he put it eloquently. It's about who you know, then applying what you know. G C S I has a relationship with the county.
State.
The state. And other municipalities here on a local level. They've done good work for us within the last couple of years. So we can afford them, they're already in the budget. This was something, again, that Mr. Irving and I, after Wayne Westland, we had a conversation. It was like, okay, does it make sense for us to bring to you all, to give us, again, a person that would help us with our strategic plan going after legislative dollars, dollars, not only on the state level, but on the federal level. And then with Mr. Irving, of course, running Joe Tate, and Joe Tate is now the Speaker of the House with the state, you know, it just gives us all types of other insight into what we're doing and then working with G C S I on top of that. So Inglewood's, unfortunately, we're behind the eight ball because we haven't done this. So we need everybody advocating for us. We need all of us, you know, to, Councilwoman Watley, I mean, ye- yes, we don't need Mr. Irving to come in and say to us, let's go to the state house and, and speak on the behalf of our citizens. We should be doing that. If we have an issue, we go up there, you know? But we wanna make sure that we're all, again, with the plan. So G C S I, yes, we should keep them aboard, they're part of the budget. With this, this is money, again, that I don't wanna necessarily just to go into the general fund because it's a, additional monies where we need to use it in order to get more money. And that's what I'm trying to do. We gotta spend money to make some money. Any other questions?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So you said the, the sixty thousand will be put into the general fund, right?
Yeah, the general fund monies, sure.
Okay, okay.
Hmm. But we would, again, like we took the hundred thousand last year, and we said we were gonna do, I said, well, let's do speed bumps. She said, no, we don't wanna do speed bumps. And I said, okay, what do you wanna do? Some people say, let's do some parks, let's do this, let's do, where nothing happened. And then that money just got washed in the general fund budget, right, Mr. Green? So now with this, I'm saying, okay, let's at least look at doing something with at least a portion of it. I mean, the other portion, you know, I have some ideas, like, uh, lights on the building at the police station.
Okay, so when you say wash, is, is it still sitting in general fund or it's gone?
It's part of the budget. We made it part of the budget process.
Okay, but I mean, because you know, the way you're speaking.
So it's a wash.
Um, most money that, that's not a vendor that comes through the city of Inglewood. Most money do come through general fund.
Yeah, it's general fund money. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry, ma'am. Go ahead.
No, I, I just, I was just wondering, you know, um, I, I did that cause I just got this. I, I haven't did research on, on, on something, uh, uh, anything like that. But I, I'm taking him at his word that, uh, he, he's a Michael Jordan.
All this information is in the fact.
Yeah. Well, a- and what I'm saying is, and I, I, and I really, you, you've been doing this for a while, am I right?
Forty-two years, yes.
Forty-two years, right. And I, I think I kinda remember the firm back when I was with the Inglewood Public Schools. You know, when they failed not to hire your firm. Remember that?
I'm sorry?
You remember that, long years ago?
What?
They tried to, to get you on the federal level. Well, anyway, the Inglewood Public School tried to get you on the federal level to lobby for them.
To me?
That was your firm. But they didn't, they didn't, and what they did was, you know, they stayed with the local, like you said, with the state. And, and they, they, they wasn't getting them, them federal dollars what they should have been getting.
Right.
Okay, and I, I, I remember that. We was trying to go at some of the federal, federal dollars then. Might not have been the name of your firm.
Oh, yeah, okay. No, I, and, and, and that certainly is.
We, we should have been getting a federal lobbyist when we was in, when they had our schools. We lost a lot of money that way. And then at the end, I think we did start getting portions.
Yeah, there's no question about it. I mean, you, you know, there are certain programs where we always look at that they get divided from, let's say, the State Workforce Development Association and people like that. But guess what? Those are federal dollars that get appropriated.
That's what it was. But see, when, when they had the school system, in a poor school district like ours, they only, they had to use a lobbyist, and then all they're doing was lobbying for the state, okay? And we wasn't getting them real big federal dollars that we should have been getting a long time, years ago for that. And we, when we started going after them, a- at that particular year, we started getting partial. But we never had a lobbyist there that, that sits there all the time and lob, lobbying them dollars away, you know? And, and as you said, going back with the mayor said, he, he's a Michael Jordan. So, you know, we need a Michael Jordan right now at the federal level. That's what I'm saying. Now, do you, 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 you understand my point now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Irving? Thank you, Mr. Irving.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Consider agenda?
So move with the correction.
Is there support?
Second.
Go ahead with the question, please.
Yeah, it's just that she wrote that I gave that, uh, statement in the, uh, public comments or the, uh, councils, uh, advisories. It said that I advised about the state intern. I believe that was Councilwoman Chisholm.
You are correct, and that was a meeting prior to. So I'll re-review the records and make the corrections.
That was my only correction, so.
Okay, any others? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, have a motion carry. Boards and commissions, I know that we have.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir?
I got it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I would like to, uh, reinstate, uh, Walter, Walter, what was the last name? He's already on there.
Stargia?
Johnson, Walter Johnson, on the park of recreation.
Okay. Second. They moved improperly, second, uh, supported. Is there anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, have a motion carries. I know that we have to appoint and reappoint the Board of Review for the March review. And the city clerk has informed me that she spoke to each one of the individuals and they would like to continue. Am I right, city clerk?
Yes.
Okay, if I can get, uh, motions in support. So move, Mr. Chair. And what, is it okay if we just, all of them into the record, read their names?
Yes, yes.
And if you could, councilman, please, just read their names and then we can just. Absolutely. Go ahead. You got it? Thank you. Uh, William Miller, Lenoria Warmack, Ned Sanders, alternate, and Peggy Bishop. Is there support? Are we supposed to be saying support, second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, have a motion carries. All right, any others?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I know at one of the prior council meetings, we had talked about the zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Were those persons that potentially resigned and whatnot contacted at all? Or with any follow-up done with that, just to make sure that was all corrected? Cause I know there were some discrepancies with people wanting to be reappointed, and then there were some who had expired, and there were some who had resigned at the last meeting, but I don't know if the clerk's office or if your office ever got formal communication.
Right. I know that, uh, we had talked about Mr. Cross, cause Councilwoman Watley had brought up this reappointment um, as it relates to him wanting to continue. He had expressed to him wanting to continue, but I know that the councilwoman was gonna reach out to him and then get back with us on that. As it relates to resignation, I'm not sure what resignations you're talking about. City clerk, do you have it?
I don't have it.
Studs. Studs, he moved out.
Okay, did he send you anything?
I don't know if his time was expired or what, but, uh, Roosevelt Studs was on there.
Okay.
And he resigned from everything.
Okay.
Cause he moved out.
Okay, so we know that he doesn't have any, she, the, the city clerk doesn't have anything in writing as of yet. At the same time, you said it was on the meeting, at the meeting he resigned?
I believe so.
He's, he don't live here no more.
Okay, but we'll follow with that. Did you have an appointment for any of those, sir? Councilman Chisholm?
I don't, I just was following up with the conversation. I don't, I just was following up with the conversation I know we had, because I, since I saw it on here.
Okay.
I mean, I know we had mentioned something as well about, uh, Commissioner Oden as well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I wasn't quite sure, but I know, again, that was just another conversation that needed to be had, I didn't want to put the cart before the horse, but I just was wondering if any confirmation, um, had been done, just so we know where we're going moving forward, that's all.
He's on there now.
Well, he's on there now, but I, per the board, there were conversations that were had, but since no form of communication had been articulated, that's why I wanted to ask, because, you know, we'll get information, it'll be like the game telephone, and it'll go from Councilman Williams all the way down to Councilwoman Wiley, and it'd be unchanged by the time it got down there.
And that's for the coverage for District Two, correct? I can always reach out to them.
Okay.
I'm gonna check, check with Norma McDaniel to see if she want to go back on there.
I know, I know she did.
Yeah, I, I, I thought she was already reappointed.
You already contacted her?
Yeah, we have reappointed her.
I thought you reappointed her already.
It hasn't been updated.
We just need to update that, it reflects that. All right.
So, I guess to the general public, we do need somebody for the zoning board of appeals for District Four there. From, just from hearing, um, that he did move, and upon formal communication.
You have District Six on here too, this doesn't say expired, but it's December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, that's, uh, we need to update that.
You said six, that's a, y'all don't know four, but.
Norma McDaniel, we need to update that. Okay, but we'll make sure that we get that updated, I know that we had some updates that we needed to do, Madam Clerk, so just make sure that those are done correctly, as it relates to the planning commission as well. Make sure those are updated appropriately, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if this.
Please, ma'am, uh-huh.
Okay, what are we doing with the downtown development and economic development? Are we gonna try to get someone on there, um?
Yeah, so, I've had a chance to pretty much review all of the, um, the bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
And actually, you know, talking to, and, and having David weigh in on the appointments and how they should be appointed. It should be, a- as it relates to the DDA, board members in the DDA that either have a stake in the DDA, meaning they have a business or interest in the downtown area, the town center district, and then one, I believe, is a residence from that particular area. Now, I know that from talking to some of the members on the DDA, they want to stay on the DDA. The DDA unfortunately is not taking in any dollars right now for the DDA at all. And that's pretty much why they combined it, from my understanding, looking at the minutes, uh, from when they combined it and did the economic de- the Economic Development Commission, that was kind of like supposed to serve, kind of is both. So, that's kind of where I'm at right now, I just want to make sure that, you know, the people that want to serve, because we, we appoint people and people don't show up.
Correct.
We want to make sure that people want to serve and want to be there, and then if we can make that happen, we want to mesh that and make that happen. So, um, I'm looking at a couple of appointments that have expired, I know that, I talked to, uh, Mrs. Jeek, uh, Jennings on the DDA, and she want to continue on, and Angela Dotson was supposed to get back with me and let me know if she wanted to continue on as well. Um, so, we're definitely working on that, we just know that there's no dollars in the DDA right now, but we know that they work in conjunction with our master plan, so that's the next thing for us, as we just completed our Parks and Rec Plan, it's to update the master plan. Also, to be redevelopment ready, have the check marked for that, we have to have an active DDA. So, we know that we need to do that within the next month or so.
I know, um, looking in this, with those, the books that we received, this review, I know a lot of municipalities, um, have downtown development and, and those people know how to, they know how to write grants. So, we need to, like, maybe put someone on there that's willing to go and to learn how to write grants, because it's not fair to have them on the board, and they can't bring in money for us, because that's what they're supposed to do.
True, this is true, for sure.
And then the tax increment, we haven't had a meeting because we haven't had anything.
Going on with the tax.
Right.
Financial, so that's.
We haven't had anything.
At all, so, you're the chair.
No, but we haven't had, it was, we haven't, haven't had anything on the agenda.
Okay, all right, got you.
So, it's always canceled.
Mm-hmm, so do we need that, because we know that we pretty much spent out, so maybe a report? Do you get a treasurer's report? Let's set a meeting to do that?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Treasurer, please set a meeting to do that, let's get a report on what's happening in the Tifa, as it relates to this area, because we know we have some bonds that have been issued and give us an update.
That was the last, that was the last meeting, we had to approve the bond.
Okay, so you got an update then on relates to where you were at, and if anything fell off, and anything like that?
We haven't gotten that.
Let's do that, okay? Anything else, ma'am?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, hearing none, moving right on into it. New business, city clerk, please, item A.
Item A is to consider approval of an extension request for Consumer's Energy to continue to lease the land at thirty-two fifty Metal Belt Road for sixty thousand dollars for a period of one year.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Moved and properly supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, having motion carries, item B, please.
Item B is to consider approval to enter into a professional service agreement with Irving Policy Group LLC for government relations and public policy advocacy services for the city of Ingerster.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There's support?
Second.
Moved and properly, supported or second, y'all gonna keep.
It's okay.
I don't get it, all right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by, yes, please?
I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we definitely, uh, you know, look for, for more do- more dollars to be able to fund this, if we need to go into the future.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, having motion carries, item C.
Item C is to consider approval of an offer to purchase and redevelop two parcels of land located at two seven two zero six and two seven two one zero Michigan Avenue in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars from AAHM Investments and First Windows Plus Factory.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There's support?
Second.
Moved and properly second, any discussion?
Um, could we have them come back up just for a minute?
Please. Stephanie, come on up with them, please.
I just.
Mr. Medley, Mr. Medley, please, Mr. and Miss.
Maybe I didn't hear it correctly the first time, but I understood there was a big B going there and a, I don't know what the other parcel was for, that's all.
Propo- so, so let me make sure that this is clear.
Okay.
The building is the overtime sports bar.
Right.
The white building on Michigan Avenue North that sits in front of the Ice Arena. Back, I don't know exactly when I can remember, when the city, the building was actually, it had a small slither, like addition onto it. It was in between the other little buildings that's on the other side, that's the law office. They weren't connected, it was like right there off of this particular building. The city, when it got it, for whatever reason, decided to tear that piece of it off of the building itself. It was like a little slither, like, it was like about, literally, like, not even half of this diocese, right? So, it was on that same building itself, so just to make that, make that clear, so it's not as an open little space now.
I just want to know what the two parcels, one, they said a big B, what's the other parcel, and these are twelve thousand dollars apiece, right?
It's the same, it's the same building.
Oh, that's what you're trying to say.
That's what I said.
I need some, no, you didn't, no, you didn't, you talked about a slither.
Okay.
These are the same buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, well, see how, see how that works, same.
Tell us some of the bricks are gone.
Same building.
Same building. Now, I got it.
Yes, ma'am, same building, yes, ma'am, same building.
Just, just tell us some of the bricks are going off that building.
Yeah, some of the bricks are going off the building, same building, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, two addresses, same building, got that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
That was it.
And they're proposing to do a big B coffee there, but we know it's the TCD. So, with our agreement with them, is our city realtor standing here, as it relates to the development of that particular parcel, we know we want some retail in there, so hopefully the big B will come, and again, big B has reached out to the mayor's office as it relates to locating a big B in the city of Ingerster, and wanting to partner with somebody to actually get it done, and we just haven't found the location. And hopefully this works out.
And it would also complement the Ice Arena, because most people that's going to the Ice Arena, soccer, or, and, you know, recreation, um, they may want to stop and get coffee, or gets, you know, something to eat early in the morning, so it's a compliment to the area. Any more questions?
Any, yeah, ma'am?
No.
Okay, Councilman Shaw?
No, what, what would the taxes be, it didn't have it in the write-up, is there, what would the tax capture?
So, the taxes, and I want Mario to speak on that, I don't want to necessarily just speak on that, but we know in that average, if this comes alive, and they're putting this dollar amount that they're talking about doing and developing it where it should be at, you're talking about at least eleven thousand per year in taxes there, because of the commercial space. I know right next door is like fourteen thousand, some taxes.
Fourteen thousand.
Right next door is like fourteen thousand, you know? For the same type of space. Okay, I guess so. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes, having motion carries, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bringing us to public participation. I'm, I'm there now?
Yes.
Okay, good, bringing us to public participation, uh, please, when you come to the mic, please state your name for the record, the city clerk will be timing us, when you hit a little ding, go off, please, be respectful to everyone else that wants to speak today, because we do have quite a few folks that want to speak. Um, so let's start with Mother Cooper.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Be real brief, the Ings to Goodfellas appreciate everything that the city has done for us, and we are doing a appreciation dinner. Um, we are inviting the entire council and mayor to the dinner. We know it's Valentine's Day, uh, at six o'clock at the Boca Doja Recreational Complex. So, come and be our Valentine's, bring your wives, your children, your family, we just want to show our appreciation to the city. Um, uh, Chief Hubbard, I do need the, uh, the, the firemen that helped, uh, work, they're invited, with their families. Our DPW invited, your family, and, uh, Daryl, I don't know who else from DPW was there. I mean, you're invited, because we appreciate you allowing us to come into the recreational building, and we just continue, just, everybody that helped us, I talked to, uh, Chief Ratcliffe. And Chief, you're invited as well. Ice, you're invited, your family, I appreciate it. Everybody that helped us out, we are so grateful. Ms. Vernon, you and your staff, for sure, because you all helped us in this room right here, and we appreciate everything that everyone has done for us, and this was a very successful year for the, last year for the Goodfellas, and thank you all once again.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Felicia Paisley? But you, you need to write in, you need to write in, and I apologize, because one of my senior councilpersons did tell me that at the beginning of the meeting, I should tell people, if you would like to address this body, because we are recorded, we're in session, you need to fill out right on the desk there, when you come in, a comment card, and then hand it right to us, and then we'll get you on the agenda. So, if you still want to, ma'am, you have time to fill out a card. Okay, Felicia Paisley?
I just put it on my, uh, calendar.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I was coming up here, I don't know how true it is, but, um, are they about to build some more, um, marijuana dispenser in the city of Ingerster?
Yes.
So, my concern is that the traffic that's gonna be in Ingerster, and it's already like drug trafficking here, I'm not saying weed is drug, but it causes more addicts in the city of Ingerster. And my other concern is this weed dispenser down the street here, my sister lives two streets over, and my grandson and my nieces, they can't even sit outside, that weed is so strong, and I don't want them inhaling stuff like that, it gives me a migraine headache, and to me, my personal opinion, if it gets that bad, you're gonna have, start having people move it out of the city of Ingerster. Me, for one, it's just ridiculous, you can't even sit in your yard without smelling this stuff. So, is there something that they can do about the smell? Is that the one right here on the?
What, which one, where are you, where are you located?
Down the street from here, my sister lives two streets over, so when we sitting outside having a family.
They never did.
Family gathering, the kids are like, what's that smell, you know, they five and six years old, seven and eight, it's ridiculous.
Totally agree, one hundred percent, and let me say that right now, the state of Michigan is putting in new laws to regulate smells coming from those particular businesses as it relates to that, and that's something that will be enforced by the actual state of Michigan, and also to our local law enforcement with those, uh, rulings come down. But know this, that we are definitely aware of it, and as it relates to our resources, we're just trying to figure out exactly where everybody fits, working with our new police chief and working on the task force to be able to tackle that for you. Because, believe me, leaving out the city hall, I smell it myself, so I understand.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Okay, uh, let's go, who you just, who just came, hold on once, did you get anyone that just came in? These are, okay, good, Eugene Moore? Commissioner Moore?
Yvonne.
Yvonne.
Commissioner Moore?
That's E- that's Yvonne.
It is Commissioner Moore, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Moore.
You say Eugene.
Thank you, guys. Yvonne Moore?
He's been messing stuff up all day.
So, uh, first of all, good evening, mayor, council, and all the, the city officials. I just wanted to touch bases to let you know that, um, February twenty-sixth, we are hosting, uh, celebrating our past, present, and future. What we're doing is we're, um, pioneers of Ingerster, so what we're gonna do, we're actually gonna submit this, save the date, this is, uh, for the city council, and also the mayor, we would like for you to, um, be a part of this also. We want to show our kids that, um, the past, the past people that were in Ingerster, that what they did, the present people that are here, what they're doing, to show our kids, no matter where you live at, in Ingerster, whether it's housing, whether it's Ingerster, where you came from, that you can put your aspirations and your dreams, and you can become anything that you want. So, that's where the future part comes in, when we're gonna highlight our children. This particular program, we're gonna have, um, on February twenty-sixth, it will be, um, at the Spring Hill, uh, sorry, Ingerster Spring Hill Missionary Baptist Church, which is located at, um, thirty-six fifty-five Spring, Spring Hill, and that will be from two to four, that is a Sunday. Uh, we will be having, um, refreshments, we're asking, it's not, um, it's appreciated, but it's not necessary, we're af- asking for you to dress in your ethnic attire, just to show our people here in Ingerster that we all care about our city, our community, and our kids. So, that's what that is for. Um, also, we just need a co- uh, RSVP by February twentieth, if you're, uh, planning on attending, to, uh, the numbers are on the card, and we do have a flyer, so that way we will know how many, um, meals that we'll have to be able to prepare. We don't want to leave anybody out, uh, we're gonna do an actual soul food dinner, um, to make sure that everyone will be able to taste, you know, some people doesn't like this, they don't like that, but we'll do a soul food dinner, to hopefully, uh, be able to highlight everyone's taste buds. Also, on, um, February the thirteenth, which is Monday, right before Valentine's Day, we're gonna actually have, and this is for all of our children and some of our adults, we ask you to come make a Valentine's Day card, bake some cookies, you know, for. We ask you to come make a Valentine's Day card, bake some cookies, you know, for the parents and someone special in your life. We're gonna actually have the cookies there for them to cut out, bake. Um, if you wanna come and help, it's more than, we're more than welcome. We're looking for anyone who wants to donate, anything is, you're more than welcome. And that's from four to six. And that will be at our Lehigh Center, located two seven four four one Lehigh, um, in, over in housing. Uh, last but not least is we're going to, uh, also have, um, our Unity and the Community Annual Easter Egg, um, Easter Egg Parade and Hunt. That will be in, in April. We're coming now to let you know that we need all the help that we can from all the organizations, from the community. Um, we wanna make sure this is really special, like we have for the previous years. We are accepting organizations' input with donations. And that will be on April the eighth. But prior to that, we will, we are looking to have, um, some type of movie for the kids to let them see, to let them remind them, basically, what Easter is all about. It's not just about, all about, um, candy and, you know, things like that. So those are some of the things. We wanna say thank you to everyone that was in Inglewood that helped us during the Christmas. Um, we appreciate all the help that everyone gave. And we also are looking for, um, our, for getting ready for our summer school program. And we will be letting everyone know about that. We will be doing, um, ceramic classes, cooking classes, and also etiquette classes for our kids, doing technology and a little music. So they can learn how to do music, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
She didn't mention a time.
Time for?
For the public, for the February thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The public isn't getting the flyers.
I'm sorry, that is two to four.
Which one, you had couple of in February?
That was the one, uh, for the Spring Hill Baptist Church on February twenty-sixth.
February twenty-sixth.
From two to four.
Two to four P M, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Octavia Smith?
Again, um, good evening, mayor and council and city of Inglewood residents. Just wanna come and thank, first of all, the chief, Chief Hubbard. He generally always comes out to support the Inglewood Task Force when we have our winter blast. And our winter blast was held at the Inglewood Valley Golf Course, where the children did have an opportunity to do some more, play virtual golf, go outside and play in the snow, um, and just do some table games. So, and the chief always makes sure that the fire department comes out and supports. So I wanna thank you. Um, and we wanna thank everyone who supported the winter blast. Um, from the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, we wanna thank all the persons who made a point to come out to support our pop-up. That was at our location, our building on two six seven one seven Michigan Avenue. We had a pop-up last week where we had three vendors, which was Anna's Chocolates, Juliet, um, Julax Fruit Designs, and Hala Hala Hala. And, and they were so happy because the people that came out really came out and supported them at the pop-up. Just to remind you, our next Inglewood Chamber of Commerce pop-up will be at Biomet on March the second. And it's generally for one hour, six to seven P M. Um, and just come and learn about Biomet if you have not had a tour already. These, um, pop-ups are free of charge for our business community and also our residents. So, um, if you can go online, or you can always look at the Inglewood Chamber Calendar, well, not Inglewood Chamber Calendar, but the Chamber and City of Inglewood Calendar. Cause we did participate and collaborate this year, which we have a beautiful calendar. So I hope everybody's getting an opportunity to look at it, look at all the ads that's in there, and support Inglewood and local businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Any questions, I'm sorry? Oh, I don't, I did forget, don't forget about Zumba. Every Tuesday and Thursday, six to seven, at Western Wayne, and yoga on Mondays, six to seven. Thank you.
You're welcome, all right. Is it C Porter? Porter, please. And you, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, everyone. I am Charaladia Porter. And, um, I have a concern. I had reported a water main break in front of my home, December the eighteenth. And it was on the weekend. So the number I called, uh, routed me to the police station. And they said they put the, um, complaint in. So when Monday came around, I called the city of Inglewood. I'm not sure if I spoke to any of you here. But they also said they put the report in. And, um, New Year's Eve, December thirty-first, is when the city came out and dug up all the grass in front of my home from the sidewalk to the street. All the grass is dug up, and they dumped it all into the street. And then they scooped it all back up and just threw it back in front where all the grass is supposed to go. So it's just a nasty, muddy mess. And no one has come back to do anything. It's not leveled for any grass to even grow back. It's just lumpy, bumpy hills and dips and everything. I honestly believe the water is still leaking, okay? What saved me for a little bit is the snow and froze it up in the snow, so I could walk out there without being in all the mud. I just wanted to show you a picture of a pair of boots of mine that I have ruined from walking back and forth, trying to get from the car to get into transportation, to go to my doctor's appointments and things of that nature. These were one of my best pair of boots that I thought was for this type of weather. But by tracking and all that mud and everything, I destroyed these boots. See, my feet get wet now. If you guys could see this.
Yeah, so let, let's go ahead, back to the podium real quick, and then what I'd like for you to do.
My daughter bought me these, and as you can see, they're getting messed up.
Yeah.
I'm trying not to ruin them.
Yeah.
So, um, the mess is still there. And this is what it looks like now. This is still there, so that you can get a good idea
Okay, yeah.
of what I'm dealing with. I'm tracking this stuff in my home, into people cars.
Okay.
And I'm just curious to, I'm sure you guys are gonna get around to it, but I'm just curious to how long I have to deal with this. Cause now it's February.
We do restoration work in the spring. And we tear property in the winter. We put it on the list, and we come out from May to October, we do cleanups of areas that we tore up in the winter for water main breaks. And roughly at that time, we would have, I think we had about twenty-five water main breaks around.
Tony, your microphone, Mr. Bivins.
So around that time, when you had your water main break, I think we had about twenty-five water main breaks at that time. So we were working seven days a week, non-stop. So we will get around to cleaning. I have a restoration company that comes out from May to October to take care of all the work that we tear up during the winter.
Okay.
You will be at it. I will make sure that you're on the list, when I talk to my staff tomorrow, and I'll come out and take a look at the property.
Okay, thank you, because, um, it's just a nasty mess.
Oh, I, I, I can understand.
Are they gonna plant grass back as well?
Yes, ma'am. We put it back to the way it was.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Joseph Hamilton? Excuse me, ma'am. You can approach right here, just give whatever you need to give right to the clerk, whatever you're trying to give.
My name is Joseph Hamilton.
Okay.
Thank y'all for letting me be able to come up today, God bless y'all. And, um, I'm here today about a water issue I've had with one of my rental properties. I've came to the city county building about several times in the last two months. I talked with, um, the director, and, um, unfortunately, nothing gets solved. And, um, my house is up for foreclosure due to the fact I couldn't get a tenant in. And it was a water main break, I mean, I've been having problems with this house. The papers that I gave y'all, I would like for y'all to look, so I could better express myself with what I wrote down. I got one specifically for the mayor, and the rest is for the rest of the body up here. As you will see in this, it will be what my issues are. The next page will be.
Give one, Mr. Bivins.
Water, about water leakage issues.
Go ahead, Mr. Hamilton.
And then the next page, after the water leakage issues, it will go into the billing cycle on how I'm being billed. In this billing cycle from two thousand eighteen up to present, I'd have had enough water where they could have canoe from Stanford to here. Over twelve thousand dollars worth of water has been generated out of this property. And if you will look and see, it's been spikes. It's been thirteen, twenty-five, three hundred and five, hundred and ninety-seven units being used every month. And this is a two-bedroom house. A four-person house only uses four units of water. So I don't understand how I'm using fifty-seven units. And once again, three hundred units. Hundred and sixty-eight, hundred and ninety, and so forth. And then if you get down to the last, after you go past all of the billing cycles, you will see work orders. The work orders show that the house was abandoned, and it was still a hundred and ninety-seven units being used. And the city came out, even declared that it was abandoned, vacant property. And how did a hundred and ninety-seven units get used, and then it falls back to fifty, then it go to one? So what I'm here for today is, I'm asking that y'all make some kind of concessions on contacting the people at the treasury office in Detroit. And, um, so I could pay my taxes and keep my property. And also, you know, it helps for us to maintain people in houses from vandalisms and squatters and other things. And, um, I have another issue here today, but I need to address this first. And I will be coming back to your body with my other issue, cause I have to have other contractors to come out to give me estimates on what needs to be done.
Thank you, sir. You had already spoken with Mr. Bivins already?
Yes, I did, but I, I, I believe that me and his conversation didn't go as well as it should have in a professional manner. So that's why I wrote this down, so you all can see it, and he can see it in its totality too.
Okay, that's fine, I'll follow it with you.
All right, thank you.
Well, did you have a question for? Yeah, please.
Did, did anyone inspect this property and find out, did you have any leaks in there or something? Apparently, it had to be, the water, the water had to be leaking for several, several months.
Yes, yes, it has.
It was leaking?
Yes, it, it, it had, it, that's on the second issue that I'm, I'm gonna bring to you. And I think that I'm not adequate enough to talk in that manner. It might need me to have a council with that. So I do have the hazmat, one of the hazmat guys that came out that showed me where it was leaking from. And the house is basically destroyed, in a sense. You know, but like I said, this issue I have now is that I'm trying to keep my property, and then deal with the second half of it will be coming to y'all collectively with four other people, than just one hazmat company, to tell you what's going on, and then go from there.
Okay, one more, one more question, Ms. Mayor. All of this, these water bills went down to the county, what you saying?
Yes. Only owe for two years, and it's twelve thousand dollars that they're saying. And most of the lady that I listed on the front of the first page, her name is Joanne, said that she need to know what's going on because they wanna put my house in forfeiture. Now, I've been unable to keep a tenant in there due to water main break outside, pipes busted. I didn't pay, I'd have fixed it, Inglewood came out and fixed it. Then the last time, somebody vandalized the house, um, January twenty-three, we went in there. House was tore up, but nevertheless, it was a leak that was found by the insurance company. And it was leaking from the meter. And it was not leaking behind the meter, it was leaking coming into the meter. Inglewood came out on one T N, it fixed it, it come to declare that it was a bushing, an old bushing that was rotted out. But ain't no telling how long that water be leaking, which caused it mold and other things.
So it's going, it's going through the meter?
It was coming up to the meter.
Through the meter.
And it was leaking right here, I have, I have it on my.
They were charged you each time the water was leaking from there?
I don't know how I get charged three hundred and some units, man, that's like.
What we wanna do is, we'll, we'll talk with Mr. Hamilton.
Okay.
So you talk to Mr. Bivins, your next point is talking to me.
Okay, I already talking, Mr. Bivins.
Yeah, so I'll call, I'll contact you.
Okay.
Figure out what we need to do from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, mm-hmm, all right. Uh, Craig, please don't have me about your last name.
I think he left.
Craig Lee?
Yeah, he left.
Okay. Did you, he was, pass that over to, you read that, and then you can pass it on over to, uh, pass it.
North River.
All right. Bonnie? Hey, Bonnie.
Hi, everybody, I'm back.
Hey, how you doing?
How you doing? I know Ruthie, I worked with Ruthie for Parks and Recreation. I know your mom. Anyways, I'm here today because you guys wanna beautify and do a lot of stuff in the city, which is actually really good, okay? What I'm not liking is you have all this new stuff coming into the city, like the ruchia thing, and, uh, the lady fixing up the ice arena. Actually, I worked at the ice arena back in the seventies and eighties, so I know, you know, about all that. My thing is, you wanna really beautify, we need a lot more going on with cleaning up the blight in the city. I'm just seeing too much of it, too much of it, you know? When, basically, when the runners move out, I mean, it's just, it's filthy, it's trash everywhere. And I, I mean, I could make you a list of houses that I've seen that actually need to be cleaned up. But then again, I'm not a code enforcement officer, so I can't go over there and ticket it. But they can, and so can you. So I feel that we really need to get on top of things and clean up the city. Now, number two on my agenda here, is about these marijuana houses or marijuana businesses. Now, I'm gonna ask you, I think there's six in the city, is that true?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
Well, there's a, there's a list of marijuana businesses, according to what my neighbor told me today, that she looked it up online, it's saying where in Inglewood they're at too.
Are you talking about retail spaces and?
Uh, I think they might just be businesses, I'm not sure.
Businesses overall?
Yeah, yeah. She was saying six total.
Oh, you, you have at least, at least.
She, she come up.
Probably about eight, as it relates to the cultivating centers.
Uh, probably, probably. But my thing is, like, that other lady that was up here speaking, now, there's a problem right there, where she says she lives down the street from it. And then, you know, her kids are breathing this in and everything. Now, I know it's up to you guys on the council to actually do something to have less of them in here. I mean, you can change the laws, you can change the zoning, you could do whatever you wanna do. But the reason I'm saying it's bad is because Inglewood is not a rich city like Livonia or Canton or anything like that. I agree to have one, but you keep letting it come in here, you know, you're gonna have a lot of problems. You're gonna have shootings, we're gonna be called, you know, mini Detroit, and we don't want that. And I already see it happening. I mean, I can literally point out drug houses in the city of Inglewood. I'm a retired postal carrier. There isn't one house, I don't know where anybody lives. Like I said, I've worked with Ruthie Williams at Parks and Recreation. I worked for the city hall. Uh, you know, I'm just letting you guys know how it's all gonna go down. I mean, I've been here too long not to see these things. But that's all I wanna say today, thank you.
So one thing that I would like to say to you as it relates to blight?
Yes, yes.
See, click, fix.
I do that all the time, and nothing H A P P E N S.
Well, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't believe that, but.
Well, it, it, because I, I do, I do a lot.
Call me directly then.
I will.
Okay.
And I also call Steve, but I do have a.
You can call me directly then.
Okay, don't want me to call Steve.
And we'll see what happens from there.
You don't want me to call Steve.
But you can call Steve if you want. I'm saying, call me directly, I'm the person that oversee them to make sure it gets done.
Well, that's what I said, because I could give you a list of addresses.
Let's do that.
And do that and everything. Now, there's another question I wanna answer too, with Steve. In the relation, in the relation to the question about the McDonald's on Cherry Hill and Inglewood Road. I talked to corporate about that, and the reason that McDonald's closed, there's too many fights, and there was a gun shooting over there too. There, the kids would go in there after school, they trashed the place, and corporate said, we have, we just gotta shut it down. So it didn't have anything to do with the business, the profits, or anything like that, just to let you know.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I appreciate it, they just wouldn't communicate.
Oh, no, because the, the shooting that was there, it happened to been a kid that I knew that happened to. Oh, no, because the, the shooting that was there, it happened to been a kid that I knew that happened to. So that's one of the main reasons they got rid of it.
I think they gave me one of them political talks, because again.
Well, another thing, they were hanging out and selling drugs on the, right there in front too. So what do you think's gonna happen with the laundromat over here? Same thing.
Well, it's not gonna happen if we're together standing in the guard. It's time for us to step up as a community. We just allow things to happen.
But we, but we didn't. It's.
So now it's a different day.
Right, that's exactly, exactly right.
I'm glad that you're getting involved. We'll see what happens from there.
I'll see you next month.
All right, have a good one. Thank you. All right, Gabe Henderson, come on and finish this off. Come on in, come on, sir. Come on in.
How, how y'all doing, family? First of all, y'all want to say, uh, you know, glad to see everybody is healthy and all that, looking good and all that. All right. Uh, I wanna, uh, I wanna thank, you know, the city for allowing the, uh, We Rise program to relocate in the Boca Doza Rec Complex. Had a little problem over here, uh, at the old Floyd B. Simmons slash Malcolm X, you know? And, uh, I, I hope they get that together. That's a nice place. I used to, back in the day, oh, seventy-something years ago, I used to go over that, that wreck, you know? And hang out. Anyway. So I want to thank y'all. Okay, We Rise program is active. We, we going Mondays and Wednesdays. And, uh, from three-thirty to, you know, eight, something like that, you know? You should drop on by, see what we're trying to do for the young folks. We got sewing going, uh, cooking going. They got dance going and a little, little woodworking going. We've been, you know, so just stop on by. If you got any children, you know, might have a little problem, have to, you know, drop, drop them in, you know, we can probably help them along. And that's about it.
All right.
I want to say I love y'all.
Love you too.
And y'all, y'all keep on doing the good work. Y'all sure is looking good.
He is, he looking good. He looking for some green jeans. I like that. All right, jumping right into it. City clerk, got anything for us? All right, city treasurer, anything for us? All right, since we got you here, fire, you got anything for us?
Oh, sir.
All right. Police chief, anything for us?
Uh, no.
All right, well, city attorney, you already had your turn, so you said you had nothing for us. All right, going ahead on. Councilwoman Wiley, you got anything for us?
Yes, I do, sir.
All right, go ahead. You're welcome.
First of all, I would like to, uh, let the public and the organizations know that, uh, Kalela Smith, uh, is Miss Rodeo Michigan two thousand and twenty-three. Now, this is a, a young black lady who has, uh, been in a few parades with us. And she's looking to partner with any organizations or anything of this nature to continue to sponsor her. Or to, uh, uh, allow her to showcase herself in the city of Inkster. Now, it says in the email she sent me that she is having a coronation here in the city at the rec center on March fourth at six P M. Is that on the, is that on you all's? Okay, all right. So, uh, lovely young lady. Like I said, she does all kinds of horse tricks. I'm sure she's not gonna do it in the winter. But like I said, she has performed in several of our parades and she'd probably be interested in doing it again this year. So she, she was Miss Black Rodeo last year. Now she's Miss Rodeo Michigan.
Wow, that's outstanding.
Twenty-three. So, um, if anyone is interested in, uh, having her have, uh, uh, you know, doing things or having her sponsor or donating to her cause or just merely supporting her and giving her whatever she needs to continue to proceed, you can send me an email, because all I have is her email address. And I checked with her about a phone number and stuff, but, uh, you want to send me an email? All our emails here are our first initial, S. Watley at cityofinkster.com. So, uh, that's something for, uh, the organizations and things to think about. It's really, I mean, when you see her in all her regalia and the horse thing, it's, it's, it's something to see. Okay, my second thing is that I want to urge Inkster residents to attend next, the next council meeting. Okay, uh, there is going to be an amended marijuana ordinance, uh, that's being proffered. And it has the potential to inundate this city with, uh, dozens of these facilities, okay? Now, um, this, uh, I have been trying to limit this since they began, okay? And, uh, that has not worked out real well, because the young lady says she thinks we have six. We got way more than that. In the queue, waiting to open up, okay? And this proposal or this ordinance is going to make way for tons more. And enough is enough, okay? Um, here it is, is that, uh, we gotta stop thinking that this is the only business we can use to progress. We have to diversify. We have to have other things in the city of Inkster. This one-trick pony type of business management, all it's gonna do is create an, a, a negative environment and, uh, stop businesses from coming in the city of Inkster. So you need to show up. You need to bring a neighbor with you or somebody. And you need to contact every last one of your representatives and let them know how you feel about more. Because that's what this ordinance will do. It will make more. Now, you also should, uh, contact the, uh, city and see if they'll give you a copy of the ordinance so you can read it for yourself, so you know what they're proposing, okay? Now, um, and where they're proposing it is on Michigan Avenue. Now, Michigan Avenue is prime real estate, okay? We stopped used car dealerships from being up there on Michigan Avenue. We can't stop marijuana? That's, I mean, this is just does not define the city of Inkster, and that's what's happening. So I'm urging you, no, I'm begging you, I'm pleading with you to show up and just say no. That's it, mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Washington?
Um, I don't have anything for tonight.
All right, Councilman Shaw.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, um, I just want to give kudos to, I seen a report on the news. And she's actually here tonight, Ms. Stephanie Taylor. Uh, where'd you hear, Ms. Stephanie? She's also our realtor. Uh, she, it was a report that was done with her helping the homeless youth of Covenant House. And I saw her out there working with the youth, trying to get them shelter, trying to find them resources. And she was out there, man, in the cold weather, and I just want to give kudos to Ms. Taylor for a fine job. Fine work. You talking, you talking about a great, you talking about a great work. That is a great work to help someone move and going into transition. That is wonderful. God is gonna bless you with a great blessing because of your faithfulness, because of your dedication and commitment to those young people, to those homeless people. And you keep on going and you keep on doing what the Lord called you to do.
Okay, that's all I have. Reverend, you gotta follow up. He, he gotta go after this. It's on you, sir. Mayor, Mayor Portim is always before me. It's on you, sir. Say amen, no.
Yeah, I had to say amen behind that. Um, but I, I just liked to, since it was, was, uh, that he brought her name out tonight, you know? Stephanie is not new to Inkster. Stephanie have always, my organization been existing in this city of Inkster since nineteen eighty-seven. I have often, many times walked, called Stephanie out of bed at night to take homeless women, better women out to the shelters and thing. Not only that, there's shelters around here that we have to do that to, people that have nowhere to go. So that, that's, she's been doing that for, uh, umpteen years. So I'm, I'm gonna piggyback off of the preacher down there and say, uh, God is really working you to do great miracles in this area, okay? So I, I just wanted to bring that out, Mr. Mayor. Um, that when we talk about good people and need to go places, many times she'll tell you she have put many homeless women and families into two different shelters. And not only hers, many more we can just name that we can use, okay? That people should know about what to do when people have these kind of problems. But other than that, I have no more to say. Happy Valentine's. Might not see you on Valentine Day, so happy Valentine Day to all the ladies in the house and, and, um, and happy black history to all of you that, that helped enhance black history. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Tell me, you gonna be separated. Councilman Shaw?
All right, um, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for clarity, because I heard, I know you were asking earlier, is it second, is it support? So just for the public, because I know they probably already wondering, like, what are they talking about? Um, when we took the parliamentary procedures training. They said, even if you're against something and you say second, it doesn't say that you're supporting it. They're saying support means you're in favor of it.
Makes sense.
So that's, you know, when we were up here, we kind of confused, because it's just been passed tradition that we always say support. So even though we say seconded or seconded, and then you say it's been properly seconded or supported, we just say second so we can get at least into discussion or vote. But that's for the general public, I, just because it came up.
Yeah, no, no, appreciate it.
Um, also, for those who may or may not know, Mr. Nelson Isaac Ike Willis, he worked with athletes and I believe was a teacher over at Taylor Center and or Robishaw. He passed away. Um, his services will be held by Penn or Funeral Home on Saturday, February eleventh from two to three P M. That's the family gathering. And then a memorial service will be on Saturday, February eleventh, same day. Um, from, to follow directly behind it at three P M. to four-thirty P M. Again, that is for Mr. Nelson Isaac Ike Willis. I know for a fact that persons from Inkster who were in the Taylor School District knew him very well, the different athletes surrounding, surrounding, um, in the surrounding communities did as well. I just can't remember about Robishaw, but I just wanted to put that out there because he was one of my church members. Also briefly after the meeting, I just need to tap in with the fire chief and the police chief, because I've been meaning to give something to you guys and I still forgot that at my house. So I just want to make sure I tap in with you guys, find out what your schedule is, just so we can cross paths briefly, maybe tomorrow evening or something like that. And Mr. Mayor, I didn't forget about you either. I know for weeks we've been supposed to communicate on the telephone and I haven't gotten with you. Um, and then.
I know you've been, I know the key is driving you crazy.
And then, I've been speaking in fragments, not completely sincere. And then, um, Commissioner Faison for the planning commission, just want to thank you for your time, your duty and your commitment to the city of Inkster. Um, it's been a pleasure working with you, wishing you the best on your future endeavors and many more. And I hope we didn't give you too many gray hairs on the planning commission. Thank you for your time. We love you, Kim. You're awesome. She got bigger and better things to do. But she gonna still help us though.
Thank y'all for telling us. You just found out?
He the president.
Other than that, are you at the floor?
All right, sir.
I do, I do have one. I just want to thank, thank DPS for when we had the snowstorm. And they came and cleaned the roads. I just want to cheer you. Thank you. My street was done by the time I got home from work, but thank you. All right, that's all I have.
All right, excellent. Anything else? All minds satisfied, motion adjourned.
Oh, you didn't have nothing?
Nothing at all. Motion adjourned. All the favors.
Support.
All right, all right. Over, all right.
Happy New Year to you. I haven't seen you.